Good evening and welcome to the August 27th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First order of business is roll call. Before we start, Shep will be a full member tonight.
Scott Shepard here.
Cap, present.
Kathy Yellow, present.
Tess, your present.
Alan, present.
Just go there. Also with us, we have James Jensen, building inspector and trader. Everything. Barbara, attending the planning, planning board and land use administrative assistant. And remotely, we have Vanessa Price, the town planner. Next order of business is to review and vote on minutes of July 16th, 2024. Questions, comments? Your motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from July 16th.
Second.
Roll call. Shepard, aye.
Kathy Yellow, aye.
Tess, your aye.
Alan, aye.
Just go on. Item number four, action items, vote to adopt the amended site plan regulations. Questions? Make a motion to adopt the amended site plan reg-
Second.
Roll call.
Shepard, aye.
Kathy Yellow, aye.
Tess, your aye.
Alan, aye.
Genuine cases from July 16th, 2024, 240-8-NR-2-sub-22 revised Young Road LLC. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair members of the board. Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering. Give you a brief update on where we're at with the plans, what changes have been made, where we're at in your process, and then I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you or the butters or public may have. So, at the last planning board meeting, we presented a revised layout for a 22-lot conservation subdivision. This is a density reduction of one total land unit. We had previously contemplated utilizing cluster groups on the project. And as I mentioned at the prior planning board meeting, we had presented a plan that showed lots and not cluster groups. Generally, the layout is the same, just an exceptionally large amount of detail added to the plans at this point. So, we have designed each one of the sites, designed each one of the shared driveways, the roadway that proposes access to 16 of the single-family units. We have designed and analyzed the stormwater systems pursuant to alteration of terrain standards in your Barrington's stormwater regulations, and then made minor modifications to the plans throughout. A few of the large highlights. The open space area, we still are proposing four open space areas. One, two, and three are to be privately held by the HOA. They primarily have open space areas around some of the home site areas and contain the stormwater features on-site. And then, open space area number four, which makes up the bulk of the open space, which is open space area number four. It's 41 acres approximately in size. And the owner is working with DTC attorneys on providing for the ownership of the land to remain with the homeowners and the homeowners association. But that area would be eased and is currently discussing that easement with Southeast Land Trust. So, there'd be oversight by that type of conservation group of that particular easement. In addition to that, Fish and Game has required a conservation deed restriction be placed on that parcel, which we are finalizing with Fish and Game, and we would present to you as part of the legal document package that we would prepare and submit to you for the next planning board meeting. There were two access points down to open space area number three and previously provided access, is that me? And previously provided access down to open space area number three. And number four, open space area number three has actually gotten smaller so that we could increase the size of open space area number four, which is the area that would be open to the public and eased by a conservation group. We've revised the two access points. We originally thought we would need two culvert crossings to get under the roadway and get down to that area. We determined that we only needed one, so what we did was we placed the one at the bottom of the roadway, and that provides access down to the top portion of open space area number three. And then, we revised the second one, so it was more centralized, which provides only pedestrian access down to the small area that we can construct within the storm walls for some open rec space and field space and some passive recreation features that we've designed into the plan there. So, that is one modification. Additionally, we were asked to add some additional parking spaces to the parking array at the end of the road. We were able to fit another two spaces in there. And that's been graded out and now provided in the plan set as well. Stormwater on sites handled through essentially three areas. It's really four, but each one of the driveways now contains a stormwater system that's essentially a it's a, just like we had to do on TurboCam, it's a rain garden with an internal reservoir with an ISR. And so, it has the filtering effects of a rain garden and the nitrogen removal and phosphorus removal effects of a subsurface gravel wetland. Those capture the driveway runoff from both of the shared driveway accesses as well as lands that drains from Young Road itself. So, we were actually able to capture additional flow from Young Road that currently just bypassed down into the large prime wetlands. Able to capture that flow and provide some additional treatment prior to discharge back to the, to the natural system. The rest of the 16 lots are all captured through soil system, a pretty basic system. It's then piped down to another rain garden with ISR, which considerably larger at the back of the site. It doesn't impede any of the home sites at all and sort of fits within the landscape pretty well, in my opinion. Through that process, we're able to essentially capture all of the runoff from the developed site, pre-treat it, treat it, and then discharge it back to the prime wetland. So, we also had Fraggle Rock Environmental prepare an updated EA for you, which they've done. Items within their EA now show up on the plans. We can discuss those if you think that's necessary. And we had Abby prepare a memo concerning the water withdrawal on-site. Essentially, with the reduction in the number of units from 23 to 22, she essentially states that there's no change in any of the assumptions that she's made as part of her hydro study to determine whether or not there'd be a substantial impact from the 22 or 23 wells that would be placed on-site. In the past, we've been asked to show how some of these home sites would be graded out. We took the time to grade out each one of them. Based on where 4,000-square-foot areas are shown, which is at the rear, we would anticipate that each one of the homes would have a septic tank in the front yard that would then be plumbed to the leach fields in the backyard down slope. Again, I think as we pointed out during the last planning board meeting, a 4,000-square-foot leaching area isn't the only area that a leach field could go. And it's substantially larger than a typical leach field area is. And so, as things are constructed, home sites are constructed, there would be those types of changes. But we're demonstrating to the board that each one of the lots could be built out reasonably and has suitable area for well and septic. Other than that, as far as the process that we have to complete, we have submitted plans to CMA engineers. They've provided us a scope. We've provided the fee, and now we're just on the clock with them as they review our work. Sure they'll have comments. We'll address their comments timely and then plan to come back to the September planning.
Questions?
I'm just, a comment. I'm glad to hear that you're in negotiation with SALT because that seems reasonable since they own the land.
We've reached out to them. We haven't, the dialogue hasn't opened aggressively yet, but we intend to pursue that.
Great.
I had two questions. One, I see that this, they specifically noted numerous times that it was the water analysis is just a tabletop exercise. They didn't actually go out and look at anything on the site.
That's correct.
Is, is that pretty, is that common practice in that case?
It is for this type of geo-study. These types of subdivisions typically don't have this type of study accomplished for them because in reality, the amount of water withdrawal is pretty low. So, going to the site really doesn't do much to change her opinion or results based on the withdrawal.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I caught that as well, like the 4.82, 4.82 million gallons compared to the 213 million in the aquifer is
Right.
Pretty minor.
Right.
And then, the other question I had on it was in reviewing the Fraggle Rock analysis. One of the items that they noted was in the action, wildlife action plan, habitat ranking. I just noticed that back corner ranked pretty high, which is where there's roughly five house sites.
Yep.
What, so I'm assuming that's going to be an area where they'll have significant risk or impact to the turtles, the frogs, all the happy, loving little things that are living back there.
Yeah, so I, early on, this project has gone on for quite some time. One of the reasons that we preferred the original design is that it kept that area open because of that wildlife action plan. But we, through working with the planning board, have opted to go in this direction. So, that's something that Fish and Game also is looking at. And we have filed our NHB. There are, it's either two or three species of turtles within the area. And so, we have submitted our coordination efforts with Fish and Game and our mitigation, for construction mitigation for that. In addition, they've asked us for the conservation restriction deed for the remaining parcel so that they can be assured that the, there's no impact to those rare species.
And I was curious, would they, would they possibly come back and say, "Look, we really would just prefer you do not build in that area"? Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility. It's a highly low possibility. They, I have heard of instances of that happening. That hasn't, to my knowledge, taken place in some time. And the efforts are really more geared towards with the land that is being conserved, how to best conserve that and to ensure that construction practices on-site using only natural products, no plastic products are to be used on-site. Stormwater features are designed as we've designed them. Matting, things like that are all used appropriately. Those are really the efforts that we all go through with Fish and Game.
Thank you.
So, you have added a 30,000-gallon cistern?
Yes.
Anything else? Don't know when CMA is going to get back, but I think we have a meeting on the 3rd and the 17th of September.
Yeah, they have two weeks, and I think, I forget when it all took place, maybe a week ago. So, it seems likely that we would be able to come back on the 17th.
Okay. Make a motion to continue this to the 17th of September.
Second it.
Roll call. Shepard, aye.
Napa, aye.
Kathy Yellow, aye.
Tess, your aye.
John, aye.
Alan, aye.
And just go on.
Thank you.
Enjoy your night. Next item is C1, 101-5253-GR-24LL. Peter and Peggy Shaw. Request by the applicant proposing a lot line adjustment on 144 Long Shores Drive, map 101. That's, that's been, can't, continue.
Oh.
I should mention that.
We have to vote on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Item number two, B2, is 220-11-GR-24, designed for Edwin and Aida Alves. They've requested a continuance until September. So, let's do another motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue to the September meeting.
I'll second it. Ron, second it. Roll call.
Shepard, aye.
Napa, aye.
Kathy Yellow, aye.
Tess, your aye.
Alan, aye.
Is that the 17th meeting?
Yep.
Of the, okay.
Yep. New application, this is 144 Long Shores Drive, map 101, lot 52 and 53, with 4.56 total acres on Long Shores Drive in the general residential zoning district. This would result in map 101, lot 52, with 120,037 square feet. And map 101, 53, with 87,476 square feet. By Glenn Griswold from Millway Pines. Hello.
Or afternoon. So, presenting a lot line revision for Peter and Peggy Shaw. They have two lots on Long Shores Drive, both of them non-conforming, existing lots of record. And what they are proposing to do is shift the line between the two lots to make the smaller lot larger and give it the reasonable buildable area for residential purposes. So, this is the current configuration of the lots. Currently, the larger lot is four acres, a little over. And the smaller is about half an acre. What we're proposing to do is shift the lines such that they are both about two and a half acres. There is currently residence on 144, which is the currently larger lot. There is the well for the existing house on the smaller lot, which we're intending on keeping that there and we are proposing physically taking this line
Or will the driveway be?
The driveway, there's already an existing driveway.
You said both these lots are non-conforming. Why are they non-conforming?
So, the smaller lot is non-conforming in size and all frontage. Larger lot does not-
But, small lot now, how much frontage does it have?
Sorry?
How much frontage does the smaller one?
The smaller lot has 109 feet and requires 200.
This is on a private road?
Correct.
It's a Class 6 private road?
Yes.
It's Long Shores Drive. It's a private road.
I'm not sure that it's Class 6.
No, it's a private, it's a private road.
Just private roads.
No.
No.
You're just increasing the size of the small lot. The larger lot is not becoming less conforming as long as it beats the upland requirements for the zoning.
Yep, but the small lot, you're making basically a back lot because it doesn't have the frontage, right?
It's, it's an existing lot of record, so you're-
54 is, you're making a new lot that
Right.
is basically a back lot.
No, it's an existing lot of record that could be issued a building permit through our Classics and Private Road policy. So, they're making it less non-conforming by adding land volume to that lot. So, it's not creating a back lot. The lot already exists.
Because it has a frontage though, so it's a back lot.
Pardon me?
It doesn't have the frontage.
It's an existing, non-conforming lot of record. It is not a back lot.
That one, that one existing, but you're making a new one.
Nope. Two existing lots, adding land to the smaller lot and taking it away from the larger lot.
But the bigger one you're making now is a new lot.
No. Two existing lots.
You're just, you're just exchanging that, you're eliminating that back lot line and moving.
We start with two lots-
But the new bigger one is a, is a, is now a new lot of record.
We're not creating any new-
What do you mean, no?
It's a lot line adjustment between two existing lots.
This is one lot, and this is the second. And what we're proposing to do is simply putting this line up to here so that this area from this lot is being added to-
Taking that new lot.
So, there's only two lots.
No.
It's the same lot number, the same address?
It's an existing lot of record. All we're doing is changing the area.
Can, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, one of the things, when you look at our regulations, the idea is to make a lot so that it is shaped and configured in a uniform manner. So, creating this long neck out there that it defeats the, like, entire intention of what our regulation is designed for.
That's true, but if you look at how it's designed now, I don't see how that's
But it's not a buildable, it's not a buildable lot now.
It's still buildable. You would just get a, you'd get issued a standard two-bedroom septic for it, and that would be the design.
Right, and we actually have an older design of a septic for that smaller lot. But what he's looking at doing is being able to build further back so that it's not quite so-
Sorry, could you just make sure you're speaking to the mic? You can carry it with you if it helps, but it, they're directional, so if you're off to the side, no one can hear you. Thank you.
The wealth of the other lot is on that lot, as well as the driveway and shed, as far as I can tell from-
Yes.
The shed is partially on the lot, yes.
The driveway, there's a driveway there too, right?
There's an existing gravel driveway for that lot.
For the smaller lot.
I have to learn the coffee if you need it.
The other piece that I, I wanted to call attention to is it specifically notes in the last plan set that there is an area of discrepancy. If you follow that area discrepancy based on the move of the lot line, it would actually make that neck non-conforming. So, I would find it hard to issue, to say, "Yeah, we're okay with that stretch" until you've actually addressed and settled the discrepancy in the, in the existing lot.
That's valid.
Because otherwise, I mean, if it, if it comes out not in your favor, you've got less than a 40-foot parcel there. This long slender 40-foot stretch that is, that now totally doesn't comply with our regulations.
What regulation does that comply, would not comply with?
Because the, when you look at the configuration of a lot design, it specifically states that you'll have no park that's less than 75 feet in width and that it is not designed in a manner that doesn't align with a standard shape. Geometric shape.
Did you use tho, the disputed area as your calculations?
It was included in our calculations, yes.
And plus, if you look at Article 5.1 of zoning, the non-conforming lots only be created if the non-conforming lot is capable of supporting a well and a septic system designed and installed in compliance of applicable industry regulations. So, clearly, the intent here is that the septic and the well is on the well, is on the land that it services. This does not. This, the well is on the other property.
The current well is on the other, but there is sufficient land this piece if this is allowed that can support both the wells.
My concern is on the existing property, falls on the other property. I know you're talking about easement of some kind. But the regulations clearly state that that is not something they want. They don't want the well and the septic on another property.
That happens all the time. I don't-
Yeah, but it happens, but we're now approving a new-
But it's already on another lot of record. It's not on its own lot currently.
But we never approved that. Now, we're asking to approve something that's really not per the zoning regulations. So, I have a problem with that. Regulations state the wellness septic should be on, even a non-conforming lot should be on the same property. And this does not have that. And now, we're, I mean, it exists, and I'm not saying, you know, we have the power to change it. Now, we're, now we're kind of approving a new, a new situation that doesn't comply.
Expanding a non-conforming-
This doesn't comply.
But you're not approving anything that doesn't already exist currently.
But I never proved that in the first book, but now you're asking-
You wouldn't have to. You can't be responsible for every previous planning board.
Now, you're asking to prove something that doesn't comply.
But when you change it, you're supposed to bring it in, or as close to compliance as you reasonably can.
This does not comply with our regulations. We're asking for a new decision on this, and to me, it doesn't comply. You know, I don't think we can change it. I think it's a ZBA decision. It's zoning. It doesn't comply with zoning in my mind. So, to me, ZBA punts on it, I, I'm okay with that, but I to me, it doesn't comply with zoning.
Must have played with other places to put the property line. So, nothing else worked?
There are a couple other ways that it could work. But this one is the most regular. Going back to your comment on size and shape, to be able to give as much property as possible to the smaller lot and keep just the minimum two acres for the other lot. I mean, yes, other things could be jogged around a little bit, but it's this is pretty close to the best that it's-
This is 0.41.
I was just pointing out that you have 0.41 of the lot that is theoretically disputed and is counted in the calculation.
So, as far as the dispute goes, it's a discrepancy between the deed and another plan that was done not for this lot. I discovered it in research. As far as I can tell, it's a title issue. But the line for plan reference that I'm showing, the this line up here, is what everyone has been living to for approximately 20 years and is monumented by a licensed land surveyor, and the plan of that is on record.
Right, but you have two people that now have to come into agreement with it and either get compensated for the loss of land or just contest it, I guess, in that regard. But if the, if it reverts to the deeded lot line, now the lot line, with the proposed lot line, makes the lot non-conforming for the width and neck size of it. Thank you for digging it out. I, I mean, calling it out and doing it is the right thing to do, and I appreciate that you did it.
What do you, what's your timeframe is for resolving that?
I'm not entirely certain. Unfortunately, my client has been in my hospital recently. Obviously, yeah.
I just have a question, or just to address the board in this situation for the, in regards to that the boundary light, the boundary line. I did talk to our legal about this before he, after the application was submitted. the boundary li- the boundary line, I did talk to our legal about this before he, after the application was submitted. Um, I do understand the concerns from the board, but this issue, um, discussing it with her, has nothing to do with the lot line adjustment, does before the planning board. It does not need to be addressed before or as part of the application, but it would be best for the parties if it were addressed. Um, and that would be done through a boundary line agreement, which does not involve the town at all. And I'm just reading an email that was from Laura, um, just to kind of give a little bit more information to you all.
I, I can appreciate that, Vanessa, but that, you, we now create a problem should it not be settled out in a different manner? Or it not be settled out in a manner that's favorable for this plan set?
Well, let's.
This is, this is back to, like, we disagree.
In the calculations for the new lot.
No, the disputed land is included in the calculation.
Are you seeing it?
Uh, I, I don't see it, but I asked the question, and he answered that it is part of his calculation. I don't know which one it's calculated, it's calculated to the, the lot that they're reducing. Um, if it still meets the criteria for uplands and all other things other than frontage, I would say it's a non-issue.
It does, Jamie.
It would meet it without that piece?
Uh, well, no, the ones, the, with the boundary line dispute, as he shows in the plans, um, that meets the regulations. That one, that, that's why I wanted to go before, to ask the legal opinion to make sure that that was allowable. And that's what the guidance I was given, um, that the, his plans show, the correct, um, I don't know what word I'm searching for, regulations for the lot size, but it is included with that boundary line dispute in his calculations. Without readjusting those lines, um, you're, the board is correct in saying that those line, they would not meet regulations without that adjustment.
You're less than forty feet from the proposed property line to the line per the deed. Our minimum requirement's seventy-five feet.
Can you point me to that?
For a neck requirement?
Uh, it's, uh, for a backlot neck or just any lot size?
Any lot size.
Yeah, if you, if you know what that, I.
That's in subdivision, I think.
Yeah.
Subdivision, I think, lot shape, uh.
Is that where it is?
Pretty sure, yeah.
Because I, I specifically remember going through it with the development of the Route nine line, and Route nine.
Yep.
Try eleven-two-two.
Yeah, page forty-four of the new regulations.
Subdivision or subdivision?
Lot.
Rectangular.
Eleven, eleven-point-two, lot shape and layout.
It's eleven-two-two.
Yeah, let's go down to two, oh yeah, it's lot shape.
Yeah, lot shape. Right there, two-two, two-three, no portion of lot created under these regulations shall be less than seventy-five feet in width, except as provided for in section eleven-point-two-point-four.
And plus, the backlot thing is seventy-five. If you were to put the well and everything else on the other lot, that'd give you seventy-five feet?
You wouldn't be able to, uh, to do that at all because of where the well currently exists.
I'm saying move that, if you move that lot line so that the well is on the other property, what kind of frontage would that give you? See, I have a real hard burn with that.
Wait, what do you mean?
He, I believe what he's saying is that if this lot line was moved over
Yeah.
to include that.
Well, yeah.
To include the well, yeah, um, that would be under a hundred feet.
But as a back lot, you would only need a seventy-five-foot neck, so you would be compliant from that standpoint.
Possibly.
Because my bigger problem is you've got a driveway on the, this is gross, you've got a shed that's gross, you've got a well on the other property. That, to me, is my biggest problem. And if you could move the lot line and get seventy-five feet, you'd have a back lot, which would be okay, seventy-five feet minimum would be okay. You'd have the well with the other property, you have the driveway on the other property, you'd have the shed on the other property. All those.
Right, it becomes a compliant lot. Or a more compli-
The closer.
Well, you'd meet the, you'd meet the minimum lot size requirements, you'd have the uplands, and you'd have the, you'd be closer, probably pretty close to meeting the, uh, you wouldn't meet the frontage requirement on the one lot, but you would meet it on the other lot for a back lot. So you would have one fully compliant lot and one now more compliant lot.
I mean, to me, the, I think the, the well has to be on the property. That's what the regulations state.
We allow, th- there's tons of wells on other property. Wh- was.
We're approving this now. This is, this is going to comply.
No, I'm saying, currently, you know, Milo's Wells on the other, we've got Community Wells.
But this, we, this has got to comply.
Too. Where did, if he shows the well radius on the other lot, I, I mean, you just approved one not too long ago with a well on another property, I'd, where would, where's the well thing?
Yeah, it's under, I think it's five-point-two. It's under non-conforming lots, under zoning. I think it's page forty-one, I guess. You look at five-point, um, five-point-one, point-one, frontage's two. Non-conforming lots.
That to me says, septic and the, the well's got to have been on the, on the lot. That's how I read it.
It says it needs to be capable of supporting one, right? That doesn't mean it has to have.
Kind of a vicious building, but this case it's existing, so, to me, it means the, the well and the, and the septic's got to be on the property. That's how I interpret it.
But we're not developing the lot, the lot's already existing. And the well's on it. I, I don't have heartache with the well issue. I, I, I think that's a non-issue. Andy's issue making the fifty feet, I, I can see. If legal says it's okay, but.
Hey, you're going to do an easement. I mean, easement would make it legitimate, right?
Correct.
Would make one.
For the well.
The well being on the other lot.
Correct.
I mean, I think the zoning says, I think the zoning says different, but, I mean, that, that's my interpretation. I understand all interpretations not being reasonable.
Zoning administrator feels, uh, it's the board's decision. I think Andy's got a reasonable alternative. I think that there's a handful of instances in recent memory where septics and wells are on other lots. I, I think it's reasonable to ask to produce evidence that that lot can support its well if it needed to be moved. I think that's reasonable. And that would show that it conforms and could meet that, you know, a fourK area and a well on that lot is reasonable. The fact that the well is not on that lot, I, I don't see how that is an issue. It's the board's decision. Is there any motion here?
Wait, before you guys move forward.
Yep.
Vanessa?
Vanessa?
Yeah, it was. I was just muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, did you guys already, I may have missed it, accept the application as complete?
No, we haven't even got that far.
Okay, well, you were, you're talking about a motion. I thought you were in reference to approving or disapproving or what have you. You, you need to accept the application as complete if you so desire. I apologize if that's what you guys are doing.
I guess, what I was thinking is if some people's, some people said they should go to the ZBA first, and some people have had other ideas before the application is, you know. But I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the application as complete.
Second.
Roll call.
Shepherd.
Napa.
Capella Way.
Tessie, your eye.
All right.
Just go ahead. Opening this to public comment, is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this? Anybody online?
You see.
I don't see anyone.
The Shaw's or anybody?
No hands.
Okay. Closing public comment. You can proceed by with a notice of decision, or if somebody would prefer that we do something else, maybe you could raise that issue.
I don't, I still argue that it's, that the design is provided, does not meet our regulation.
Okay. So you accepted the application, and you suggested they make corrections and come back at a later date?
I, I would. I mean, I hate to burden, burden anybody with it in the applicant, but our job is charged, is to represent the, the town and our regulations.
Okay, Andy's making that motion, and sec- I'll second that. Roll call.
Shepherd.
Napa.
Capella Way.
Tessie, your eye.
All right.
Just go ahead.
To be clear to the applicant, um, I, just looking for a new design with a back lot that might be more conforming or.
To, and to address the fact that we have this undisputed, this disputed.
The undisputed area.
Area that needs to be addressed.
And the well, in the well thing situation, you want to.
That's an option.
I think it's.
Is that an option, or?
But it's a desirable.
Could be handled by a, you know.
With a back lot idea, it does.
That solves.
Tend to solve that problem.
I would say, if you go to seventy-five feet and you get as much as you can on the other lot, that would be helpful.
The alternative would be waivers from those sections that they mentioned, if that's your choice.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so, just to be clear, I'm hearing that you're wanting to continue the case to the seventeenth of September. Does that give the applicant enough time?
That will be the motion, yes. Motion to continue it to the seventeenth. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Shepherd. Napa.
Capella Way.
Tessie, your eye.
All right.
Thank you, um, for your patience. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Item number two, uh, two-thirty-nine dash twenty-nine dash V dash two-four dash sub. Owner Timothy Rau, requested by the applicant to close in a minor subdivision to create one additional lot with the frontage on Rogers Run. Now, two-thirty-nine, lot twenty-nine, lot two-th- lot twenty-nine would be one-point-eight-five acres, and lot twenty-nine dash one would be one-point-eight-four acres with a total of three-point-six-nine acres of Malago Road in the Village Zoning District by Kevin McAnaney. Hello?
Good, good, uh, good evening, Steve, uh, for McAnaney Survey. As the chair just, uh, brought up, this is a proposed subdivision of an existing lot, three-point-six-nine acres. As frontage meets the parts of zoning, early, uh, lot sizing.
You didn't hear the lot shaper, especially from before.
And I'll make the same argument as the last one.
Just a quick note for everybody in the room, if the applicant could, um, either adjust the microphone, you can barely hear him, um, online, so I don't know if Record will be able to pick him up, or just he could speak into it more clearly, maybe, I don't know.
Can you hear me now?
I'll go briefly through.
Yes, I can, thank you.
All right, this comment indicates there's no requested waivers. Uh, plan set checklist items have been missing, but apparently they have been added to notice of decision if we get to that point. Uh, no comments by zoning administrator, assessing, no comments, police, no comments, fire, no comments. No comments, conservation commission, uh, may have additional comments, may comment on this one. I don't think so. The board have any questions on the project? Same comment, irregular shape and a dimensional requirement that does not meet our zoning.
Second about that little carbuncle.
Bunch of them. Lots are supposed to be done so that they're cleared and untenable to the property owners.
Yeah.
This is clearly going to be a problem in the future, because I know my, my, my border of the neighborhood is a straight line. A telephone. This is not. I mean, clearly you're trying to go around stuff that's already in place, the well, et cetera. But it, it, shape is, does not comply with our lot layout requirements.
So is this a ZBA issue you're thinking?
That's on subdivision.
Oh, that's right.
In that narrowest point, is that seventy-five feet? Okay, so, that's no good, that's no, no bueno either. So, a couple of problems.
Yeah, sixty-two, and then seventy-three is the jog run into that.
Okay.
Any response to this?
It's a lot of record, three-point-six-nine acres, so you're trying to get two lots out of it. We're doing the best we can to meet all the conforming, is your, your lot requirements relative to your perception associated with whether or not the, uh, the lot would be untenable, or someone would consider that to be unknown what their lot is. I mean, this isn't the first, I mean, these are, it's a relatively minor, uh, issue relative to this lot, as well as any other ones. So you're not creating long skinies and anything else, so. It is meandering just to be able to maintain the existing uses on the property and get the requisite, uh, lot sizing. What would be the pleasure of the board? Is this a waiver requirement for you guys? What, what, how do you, how do you approach this?
Well, it's supposed to be, desired is rectangular.
Understood. As, as we know, not every lot is rectangular, but I get it.
It starts as a rectangle.
Yep.
Now we're trying to make it into something that does not conform with that.
So, if you had a, if you had a pie-shaped property, you'd never, you could never get the same issue you have. Granted, we are creating this situation by trying to get a subdivision, but the reason why you do it is because there's a need for it.
A waiver would help, you suggesting?
No, I'm not suggesting it. I'm suggesting to go fix the lot line so that it actually lays out in a way that's compliant with our regulations.
Well. We, we shouldn't invite more of these problems on ourselves.
Okay, just wondering.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't understand the, the concern relative to a lot. You look at lots of records that exist today, as they have in years past. You do not have a rectangular lot in, in, in Barrington, except for a couple that you'll see here and there. I'm just, this is, is a very good attempt trying to meet all the regulations that you guys have and providing additional law. Perception.
The fact that we have one does not mean we should create more.
I understand, but you, you don't make any more land. There is no more land to make, so you do have an opportunity to subdivide a piece of property, trying to meet the best you can for the regulations. If you say no, then what happens? So then you can't subdivide in Barrington. It's just, it seems that, you know, you're trying to address these as best you can. And every piece of property.
But you've got to follow the regulations. And this is not an attempt to say you can't subdivide land.
Yeah, I understand.
This is it saying, we have regulations in place and standards in place, when you subdivide, you follow those. That's, that's what we're saying.
And, and we try that every single time as well, as you well know. We have the rules and regulations, but again, uh, this is why we're here. For any gray areas that we can have an opportunity to have a conversation with.
Well, this isn't even really a gray area. It is very clearly spelled out in our standards in black and white.
So what would be the process if we were asking for a subdivision at this point?
Are you suggesting they actually create a straight line through existing the sheds and so forth? Come, come close to the pool?
Saying that's what the regulations.
Okay, no, what he's asking, what would, what would do it?
You know, the question is, but then you probably don't have the acres on the other side. I mean, the requirement is not for the board to sub, allow subdivisions. Allow subdivisions where there, in the regulations, so.
No, I, I understand.
Saying that, you know, we're not allowing a subdivision, that's a terrible thing.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, so there is a process for asking for waivers, I get that. So I'm asking, if, if this is, if this is a situation where we could ask for a waiver to be able to allow this type of configuration, what would be the process for the board at this point to do that?
Would ask, and maybe it gets approved, maybe it does not, depending on how the board votes on it. And you have to show a hardship. And you have to show a hardship as well, and I don't believe there's a hardship.
Under subdivision regulations, this layout, 11, what did we just say, 11-2-2?
Yeah.
That's the regulation you'd require a waiver from, because you don't meet it right now. So, you come back with a waiver request, I would say.
But before we do that, would there be an opportunity to straw poll? Would this even have any, any legs from the planning board to support a waiver for this, for a subdivision?
I mean, I'll, generally, we don't like to, you know, prejudge, but I'll say right now, based on my... I would not be favorable to a waiver request. Yeah, I mean...
Think I've made my opinion pretty well known, so... What, what would hold you up from bringing your, the Rogers Run side, moving the lot in that direction to square up the back corner?
You got a pool, you got a shed, you got other uses on the property already, you got a well. Some of those things would be competing on, on the new lot line itself.
But, I, maybe I'm... What, this lot line here? If you squared that up, and then brought this down to make a bit more of a dog leg out of it, and expand the lot, what would be the impedance on that? What I'm, so the board can see what I'm talking about, squaring that up, and then bringing, making it up in this corner down here.
Okay, so it's that back jog that you're trying to eliminate?
Squaring this up, and then bringing this line down here. So you, you end up with, you only end up with, like, two or...
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, yeah. And then you're not, you're avoiding the 75-foot issue.
Yeah. You eliminate the 75-foot issue, you eliminate the jog in it, and you don't impact anything that really appears to be in part of that radius. And you give yourself actually more frontage on the lot.
So you're talking about here, which will come across the shed?
Here, nope.
Oh, here, here.
And then bring this down here. There's it.
It would still be an odd shape, but not as odd.
You end up with, with two lines.
Something to think about.
Is that a reasonable alternative?
I just talked to Mr. Rauel, that is a reasonable alternative. Side yard, he was trying to keep some of that as part of the front, but in terms of what you just described, you gain that in the back anyways. So I think in terms of doing that, it does gain you as much as you possibly can to get as rectangular as possible. So he's got no problem with that side yard, he'll, he'll trade the back for the side, is what he just said.
Okay.
So that would be, so we would come back with a revised plan for you to show that.
Do you want to... Motion to continue?
Yeah.
Motion to continue to the 27th? Roll call.
Hang on, before you do that, just, so just for clear, we're talking about... Pardon me?
Yeah, let's do that.
Do you want to do the applications complete, or do you want to not do that? Okay, that needs to be, yeah, before the...
Must be me. Yeah. I'll make a motion to vote, to accept the application as complete.
Yep, yeah, exactly.
Trade side yard from your...
In your mind, would you still need a waiver from 11-2-2? Because it's not rectangular.
It, it is more conforming than...
More likely the waiver would be approved, in my mind, I think it's certainly a waiver.
Well, that's for a waiver?
But it's...
But it, that's way more conforming than what, what we have.
A waiverable.
John made a motion to accept the application as complete?
Second.
Third. Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Napa.
Capella.
Tessie, your eye.
All right.
Friskal, I. I'm going to open a public comment before we proceed. Any comments on this by anyone?
Anyone's online, unmute yourself, raise your hand, or type the message.
I believe there was...
Is he no one?
Hey, closing public comment.
I believe there was someone who did send a note on it, and I think Vanessa had forwarded that on to us, but they were just asked. They, they had some concern about...
Oh, right. Guy across the street, yep, yep. Well, we'll get the revised plan, and he can comment on that, so...
He asked, what was going to happen with the property?
Residential lot, right? It's, the proposed use is another house.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. You prepared to come back on the 27th?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Motion to continue to the 27th, 17?
17.
Either one, we'll be back whenever you want.
Come back when we're here.
Yeah. All right.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Did somebody second it?
Well, I don't think anybody seconded it.
I did.
John did.
Who was the first?
I motioned it.
Thank you.
Andy and John. Roll call.
Napa.
Capella.
Tessie, your eye.
All right.
See you, thank you.
Thanks, take care.
The regulation about shape, I feel that we have discretion there, because there's no done defined. Whereas the 75 feet, when you say 75 feet, it's defined.
Next item, item number three, 234-57, and 57-2-V-24-design. Owner Edward Lemos, Mark and Marla Lemos. Requested by the applicant proposal in the design review for an open space subdivision with a cul-de-sac road, less than 1,000 feet to the center, with a waiver from section 2.2.1, road design standards table 1. Location is on Oak Hill Road, map 234, Lot 57 and 57-2, in the Village zoning district, by Scott Cole of Beals Associates.
Good evening, everyone, Scott Cole from Beals Associates. Here too, with me this evening is Shawna Samas from Chimberg Builders, who's actually the developer looking for this project here. So we are tasked to go to design review and speak with the board about this piece of land that they'd like to develop. The end-all would be in hopeful of an open space subdivision. In order for us to do that, we have to provide a yield plan, in which we would like to discuss with the board this evening, so we can go forward. A client's looking at this piece of land, which consists of 48 acres, excuse me, 49 acres, which is made up of two different existing parcels, so they are being combined. This is on the east side of Oak Hill Road. There's one existing premises on the land, with one long driveway to it. As you can see on the coloration plan here, the olive cover is what is considered wetlands on the land, is comprised of 2.7 acres, or 5% of the parent parcel. The orange is the existing structure, which is set back, as you can see, from Oak Hill Road. So this is a conventional plan here that we have designed. Got a proposal of 16 lots, all well over 2 acres, with 200 feet of frontage, which as a standard, they have labeled on the plan, so you can see that. This consists of a 3,900-foot loop road, which is 1,000 feet to the intersection, with a 500-foot cul-de-sac. So I'll say that again, 1,000 foot to the intersection of the left side. This would be your normal full build-out of the parcel. Now, in conjunction with this plan, you can see the actual shape of the lot is very irregular, and very difficult to engineer. We have a main upland area here, and then a main upland area here, but to get between them is a very small sliver of available land. We've been working on this project for quite some time, and I think the board understands, through the process, the definition for a cul-de-sac length has changed.
If anybody's interested, there are supporting documents on the table over here, if, if that helps anybody. I know that, doing our best with the monitor. Sorry to interrupt, thank you.
So as I said, the, the definition for cul-de-sac have changed, where as it used to be, where the intersection was at 1,000 feet, the terminus of a cul-de-sac or a loop, adhering to that 1,000 feet was applicable. Now, the definition is no more than 1,000 feet to the center point, meaning the center point of the loop. So being with a conventional design like this, the intersection is here, is 1,000 feet. To, in order to not, not ask for that, this entirety of here, which is a good viable upland and use of the property, would basically mean it was useless. So as I said, this is a requirement of the town that we have to provide, and the end-all would be an open space subdivision. So the reasoning for the waiver would be to utilize or get value of the property, and then turn it into the open space. Now, this is an open space design on the same piece of property, with a 1,000-foot cul-de-sac, as allowed by right, excuse me, 1,000 feet would be through the center point. Let me just show everybody real quick. This is the open space design. So this design here, as your standard open space lots, they would still be on their own septic and private wells. This would provide 38 acres of open space, versus the conventional plan, is your, you know, your regular cookie cutter would provide no open space. We sort of think this is a higher use of the property, protects all the wetlands, keeps it in the open space, it's a more simplistic road. Now, as an added benefit, and to the waiver request, as you can see on the conventional, excuse me, I've got so many boards here. On the conventional here, the totality is 16 lots. That's the whole thing. What we are asking for here would be 14. But we understand there's some give and take in the process. We think this is a higher value here, saving the open space and creating an open space subdivision, versus the conventional, which uses everything, more road, more drainage, etc. So we are tasked, we went through planning to find out exactly what we're supposed to do, and believe, if you are asking for a waiver to a yield plan, the process is to come before the board to discuss it, then we'll know where our marching orders are. So that's where we stand, we'd like to discuss that with the board and get your thoughts.
I think the fire chief had some consternation about the the distance into the center of it, as well as the...
The road agent.
Road agent, thank you, yes.
Yeah, I believe both Rick and Mark had comments on the, the circle and the plowing. And on the proposed open space, we've actually implied a little bit larger cul-de-sac than what's required by town, so that would help in the commentary and review as well. But that's obviously for a later review.
All right, so you may be able to make that cul-de-sac larger?
We did, that's actually bigger than what's required today.
Now, on the yield plan, for our wetlands, you need 60,000 square feet, you know, for every lot, free of fully drained soils, etc. Does the yield plan comply with that?
Correct.
If you have some wetlands in the middle and over here...
Yep, because of, due to the size of the lots, they're so large, but we have 60,000 square feet of upland buildable land on every lot.
On the yield plan?
Correct.
Okay, now Lot 12, I heard the discussion on lot layout, and Lot 12 is, is no bueno. I mean, it's, it's less than 75 feet, it's, it's a weird shape. I mean, that, that does not comply in any shape or fashion.
For the yield?
Yeah, for the yield plan.
Correct, but as you can see, we have this big V in the external property line, and there's not much else we can do, when you have a configuration that's existing today, and a wetland finger below.
You're asking for two lots less than... I know, so they, I mean, to me, the lot doesn't comply, you can't include in the yield plan. You're asking 14, the yield plan says 16, so it may not have a big impact on you, but that, that lot is a, cannot be included in calculation.
Understood. Just to record, it is 2.7 acres, so again...
Now, on the, I see a lot of topol lines that are pretty close, so if, on the yield plan, is that, is that, is that road comply with, comply with town regulations for slope and stuff?
Yeah, there's actually, it's, at the scale, it looks worse than it is, there's very little e-slope actually out there, so mostly C and D, which you can certainly build on. We just got, which you'll see later on, we did do a soil survey, which we've actually just gotten, we will apply to the plans later on.
At that point, once we have all that, that's when we'll consider the yield plan.
Yeah. Yeah, in order for us to go forward, I believe we at least need a straw poll or an acknowledgement of the waiver, because without that, we can't go forward. That's our understanding.
Are you aware... Sorry?
No, not yet.
We've got you for open comment.
Where are the development that's going to be on this side, potentially?
Yeah, we actually received a phone call, and I believe there's an upcoming meeting, I spoke with Connor myself. This is in the, what they are considering that are going to be the village center, or what they would like it to be. We understand Barry is doing a project next door, and we're going to be in communications with them, and Connor, and I believe there's a couple of developers, sort of look at the overall area, and, and their thoughts on connectivity and so forth.
That meeting was yesterday, were you a part of it?
There was one, I believe, there's going to be another one?
Just tell them to come closer to the mic, they can't hear us.
Get that mic?
Scott, missed it, Scott Shepherd?
Oh, Scott.
Yeah, sorry.
Or move your mic closer to you.
Yeah, thank you. Because I was just wondering, there are planned unit development options here, here, you could get a conditional use permit, and then that might give you other options, and also help the town in trying to create a cohesive area.
Yeah, as I said, the communication is going to be ongoing. We had to have a starting point, as, you know, we've been working on this for quite some time, and we're recently approached by the town, so this is where we are today.
So how would people access that open space, or would there be no access?
So in here, you certainly have, you have your buffer, you have access points in either end of the actual right-of-way. In other cases, we could leave an easement, or a walking trail out, usually at the end of the cul-de-sac, we've done that in prior projects as well, at Village Place. There's a number of opportunities we can give access to.
But there'd be no parking there, so people really couldn't ideally park there.
Yeah, you know, most projects, they actually frown upon the parking. The open space is good for everybody, but then they don't want a collective parking area where trash can be left, or, or anything like that. I don't know, actually, we haven't gotten that far into the project, if it will be public, or non-public, open space, in any effect, it would be protected. That's, again, that's still preliminary at this point.
Are you calling this open space, it's really a conservation subdivision?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and part of what we continuously push is a conservation subdivision is designed for the public, ideally to have access in and around that space. That's why you're conserving it, and why we allow for the lower density use of it.
I just wonder if you, if the planned unit development option would actually give you more opportunities to develop in this whole area, and might actually, depending upon your timeline, be valuable to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just joining Scott, I'm Shawna Samas with Chimburg Development. Like Scott said, we met just briefly with a couple of the developers, and abutting landowners right in this vicinity, and we were brought up to speed on...
I might go, will you close the mic?
We were brought up to speed on what Barrington is intending to do with the town center, so the Dove Development Group, we, I talked to him yesterday, after the conversation that Connor had led, so we wanted to get through this. We are definitely open and willing to work with the town and other developers, and they all, and all the landowners, everyone seems very eager to assist how we can, in helping to create what you guys are all working towards with the town center, Barrington Town Center idea. So, we are in communication with the Dove Development Group, they are meeting internally on Friday, and then we're going to reach out to us, Chimburg and Beals will work together. And, yep, there's, it sounds like there might be opportunities to develop something differently. Obviously, you know, like Scott had said, we've been working on this for quite a while, so we're trying to pursue, proceed, but open to maybe pivoting, if the opportunity presents itself.
But would it be worthwhile to investigate that, and then come back with the...
I don't believe so. We can, like, you know, concurrently be trying to have these conversations, but we are under contract with the landowners, and it's just a little bit more time-sensitive than, than that. But we are very eager to be discussing this with other developers and landowners, to hopefully come up with some kind of idea that works for the entirety of Barrington, because understood, Mr. Jensen had shared, based on your guys' last election, it became very clear that it, that is very popular amongst most all of your residents in Barrington. So, we're definitely eager, willing, and hoping to assist in making that come to fruition, so...
Would the board be interested in a planned unit development?
As long as they comply, they can do what they want.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I think the point is that they're, they want to continue forward with this, in case the other wheels fall off the bus, they keep moving... the other wheels fall off the bus, they keep moving forward.
And I'm just trying to make sure whether the, whether the plan board would actually support a planned unit development, because it would need a conditional.
I think that, yeah, a good question to weigh the board's, you know, feelings on that.
And so by planned unit, you mean looking at various proposals together?
Yeah, if you look at section, Article sixteen, it goes through, essentially, it's trying to get more human-centric development, right? And if we were to combine that with the rest of the properties that are being under, you know, being considered, it, I think might add a lot of value to the overall.
Well, the original Dove Development included a tall building with ten commercial units and ten residential units and twenty-five, uh, townhouses, condominiums, I presume. So I don't know what the continuing discussion is about, is to advance without that or to use the lot further up, closer to this lot.
I think what Scott's pointing out is that a conditional use permit would be required to pursue a P U, a P U D.
It'd be a mixed use.
So if the board was not interested in, in, going with that conditional use permit, they wouldn't want to exercise that energy for something that wouldn't be approved by the board. It does come, the P U D does come with higher density, which makes it more attractive, but there's some trade-offs.
Well, these units, these lots were in the town center.
And that's why they qualify for the P U D, because they're contiguous with a town center lot, so that's why they qualify.
Even though they've been moved into the village.
Correct. Any, any lot in our regulations, any lot that's contiguous with the town center lot can qualify with a conditional use. If they were back in town center, they wouldn't need the conditional use per se.
But it's not a given.
It's not a given.
Right.
It's not a given, because the idea was to not allow the commercial on this section of Oak Hill. That's why we did the zoning change.
And that's why with insight from the board and others in the area, isolating that business component towards the Dove in some fashion, it would, it would take some creativeness, if that's a word.
I understand the developers are, are, don't mind, and are actually eager to work together and figure this out. So it'd be a shame if this was sort of separate and carved out in some ways.
Where you end up with a really great piece of land through there that just ends up being true, like forest land on the other side.
And I wanted to point out connectivity for those, if you, if you see the dotted line to the right of the green space, that is the railroad bed.
Right, yes.
So, so, you know, as far as access and keeping people out of Oak Hill neighborhood area to access that piece, there's other access points that might be more attractive.
Parking on either end of the railroad. So what's, I guess, what's the consternation about the cistern?
We'll need one.
I, I know, like, because you're, you're looking for a waiver from that, right?
No.
A cistern, no.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no. No, no, we will provide fire protection as needed as usual.
I thought the thousand feet was because you were concerned about the cistern. No, just the, the length of, length of the road on the yield plan, which
Which we don't prefer to build.
Right.
It's for a density purpose.
So that's the waiver he's looking for. Yeah, you would still need a cistern. Oh, the cistern's fine.
I think his concern was the regulation states that the road length ends at two different points, so based on that little extra bit, he could get a different density with a waiver for road length, not the cistern.
We could not accept the yield plan because of this.
Right, correct.
But on the subdivision, the conservation plan, your open space, how many acres is that again?
Right now, thirty-seven point eight.
Very simple, and how many acres total?
Forty.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, so you meet sixty percent requirement.
More than that, sixty percent is about thirty, right?
Yeah, I thought I did it somewhere.
What if instead of putting that into a conservation, putting that somehow to make it useful to the P U D and the rest of the area?
Mike, please, Scott. They would have to lose their density.
Mike? If you put that like that, Scott, please?
Oh, sorry.
I watch these often and I'm like, what? What did he say?
We all do it, Scott. Lean back here.
But what are we, what are we doing?
Well, he, he wanted the sense that we would be amenable to looking at the waiver when he comes back with a plan, or should he just not even bother? Just did for that thousand foot thing. We already probably going to knock out one, one for
One's dead already. How many?
One's dead.
How many would, how many lots would you lose if we don't give you that? How many lots would you lose with all the waiver?
Well, as you can see, basically here, if that's a thousand feet, you'd lose all this, basically it's an entirety, it'd be one lot. All, which to me really is the definition of a hardship on an existing piece of land. I mean, any, any owner, developer should have a right to develop that piece of property to its greatest extent, you know? And other than the regulation that had changed, it would have been fine in the past and today it's not.
So, I mean, I'm open to the waiver, but I'm also open to the conversation about the P U D. I think that's a very interesting conversation.
And that's understood, as I said, we're, we're going to look at all avenues, you know, developer has, if they can make out better with something else, we'll go that route. But that's kind of up in the air at this point.
And Lot twelve is probably not going to work in your yield plan.
And that's fine. I'm, I can ask Mr. Howard how I could get rid of it and just add it to the other ones, but I'm going to have the same shape left. You know what I mean?
You, you, twelve's a fourteen, your yield plan is sixteen.
It's certainly not a problem, otherwise.
Give it up, losing that.
Fine.
Road agent said that there would be problems plowing that?
Yes.
He did.
The smaller, typical ones he does, they usually go backwards.
So we'd have to get an opinion from him on the larger one.
That's fine.
Yeah, and to that, I mentioned to him, it's time to change the regulations if he doesn't like the design, instead of addressing it with applicants each time, because if they meet the regulations, it shouldn't be a conversation each time, it should just change the regulations to give him what he wants, if the board's, if the board agrees.
I didn't want to say it, but
Yeah, if the board thinks that's the right decision,
That is the right decision.
Then, then that's the way to address that for, for future as well.
It's reoccurring.
Yeah, once you provide us with the dimensions you've worked up that would be acceptable.
Certainly, yeah. Yeah, I can find those.
If you're looking at regulations, it's just teeny little picture.
It's small.
Okay, so, uh, any more comments?
I'm just trying to pork the regulation that they're not compliant with, because I'm looking at it, but I, which
For the waiver?
Yeah.
It should be under the road chart, cul-de-sac length.
Two point two.
There's a footnote.
What page is it?
In the subdivision regulation, site plan regulation, right?
It's residential, so it would be subject to
Subdivision, yeah. Yeah, it should be. Up on roads, section.
I guess the terminology, we, we always call a conservation subdivision.
Every town calls it, it's open space, it's the cluster.
Because, you know, in the village, you're required to open space fifty percent anyway with a conventional. So that to me is an open space. This is a conservation subdivision, so I'm easily confused.
Find that?
Nope.
I think it's labeled as a table as opposed to the section.
On the table, I think there's a footnote on the cul-de-sac.
Table one, yep. Here it is, roads.
Depending upon a conservation easement subdivision.
It's on page fifty-one, subdivision.
How would we, would we accept this structure? Because there would be no easy public access.
That, and then over is the picture of the, the bulb.
We have the discretion to ask for public access. In the conservation subdivision.
Page fifty-one?
We have the key sentence.
Pardon?
You said that again?
We have the discretion to ask for public access. It's supposed to maintain to the extent possible public access to the open space. That's what the regulations say.
Where does that say that?
On the conservation subdivisions, it's a, it's kind of, it says, kind of, in the goals of, of the goals of it, I think, so.
By maximum length, I guess that's what he's thinking about.
Question from the area. Yeah, I see it.
Here?
Yeah, the road design standards. It's twenty-three, Jamie.
Ah, okay. So fifty-one of subdivision?
Six point one point, press this slide. Residence or
Andor, yeah.
Yeah, andor. I can get you the RSA tomorrow.
Any more comments from the board before we open to public comment? Hearing none, open to public comment. Anybody who'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Please come forward and identify yourself. If you could sit at the desk, whatever's working, you know? Yep. Hit the button so the green comes up. Thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
My name's Tim Graff, I live at one forty Oak Hill Road. I'll show you the map where I live, right here. Imagine I have a lot of comments about this. And I did email my concerns and I hope you got them to
Yeah.
Irving, Graff.
Yep, the three, the three pager.
Get it right here. Good. And hopefully you've had a chance to review that. I was going to start with my third concern, and I'm not against this. I want, don't want to be appear hostile, I'm not. There are a lot of things about this I like, but I do have some concerns. One is, I talked to Marilyn Lemos, who owns a house that is currently there and will be developed around, and she's the owner of much of the property, about half the property, about seven days ago. And I said, Marilyn, I'm a little surprised where they put the road, because there's a logging road that's been cut right about here. The access, the woods behind to clean up the dead wood and stuff. I said that it looks like the, this new development road is running a driveway. And she said, no, no, you're wrong, I would never allow that. It's not on my driveway. So I think we ought to have some clarification. Is it on her driveway or is it displaced into the field?
Thank you, is that, there's two different locations. On the conventional, it's up on the left side and then on the open space, which we'd like to do, does utilize her driveway. What we do is we actually utilize her driveway as you come in, we leave the right side, because it's stable, it's existing condition, we just, excuse me, we just add to the left. So yes, it is going to use partially part of her driveway.
Okay, so I just, I don't know what, there's a process, but I think we need to make sure
Direct the comments to the board.
Sorry?
Yeah. The comments should be directed to the board and then
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I, I don't know if this is relevant, but I think that we ought to make sure that, that was her, those were her wishes. The other point I have is, the driveway itself, I'm not engineer, this is not my area of expertise. It's narrow, it faces what used to call Witch's Rock. The elementary school used to bring buses out here to see Witch's Rock, a lot of it's gone now. It's a narrow driveway and, I'll pass this around, but you can see, that's the driveway and it drops off down to the level of the field, I would say it's about a twenty-foot drop-off. And up here on this side, you can see what's left of Witch's Rock, it climbs up quite steeply into the next property line. So I'm, I would like to have more details. Are we going to blast away this? Or are we going to bring in a lot of fill on this side to build this driveway? And if so, talking again, talk to Marilyn, she believes she will be living in her house through this process. How will she access her house, emergency services and those things? I think those things ought to be clarified.
No, her stat, she's the developer.
I know.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess she should raise these issues with her
I, I can go talk
Her agent, yeah.
I also wondered, can a fire truck, you can get up that, because as you say, it is a very steep driveway.
I drove up there.
It's not steep, it's narrow.
It's not fun, I drove up there the other day.
Yeah.
You're right, the drop-off is right there.
We have regulations requiring slope.
Yep.
Et cetera, in the regulations.
And then we'll have to be
I, I know the driveway that they put when they built, or when they built a subdivision, they added my driveway, the fire department did not like my driveway at all.
This will be built, the road has to be built to subdivision standards, the standard fifty-foot right of way and so forth.
And a slope requirement still.
Slope. Can't exceed seven percent slope.
One other question, I'm not really prepared, I don't have paper to support this. When I bought the property, there was a, deeded right of way from the property to the north, Todd Dudley's property, across my property between the barn and the house, connecting with Lemos's driveway, that still exists, although it's not maintained anymore except on my side. And I was wondering, but is
That's the one they had blocked off, the little piece that dropped off the road?
Yeah, you kind of put a slope on there and stuff. He has to be open because there's telephone poles that have to be maintained and stuff. But I was wondering with the disposition of that, will, will that right of way be maintained? Through, it's not on this plan, it's wanting exactly to be maintained. I'm not, I'm not for or against it, I'm just curious.
It'll be up to the property owner. Where, where's the, the property line is right there, so most of that
The original, the right of way, as I had said, it went from here
Yep.
And connects to, and there's still road here, it's just not been maintained for a while. So that's a question I would ask, and again, I don't know
Well, it looks like it's part, most of it's part of the buffer, right?
Proposed to be, yeah, it's on our
But it goes through
Has to be a hundred
It goes through a housing lot, there's no
Right, yeah. Okay.
The other, and you answered some of my questions here, I was concerned about this broader development behind, looks like it could be fifty units, a lot of people anyways back there ultimately. And I always expect that, that they will be talking to the people developing that. Does that mean it's a possibility that this will be connected to that? I E., instead of twelve or thirteen new units, we might have possibility of fifty or more people passing this way from time to time to access their homes?
Well, once this, if this was completed to this, there'd be no access through here to that.
The way it's written now, but that's what I'm asking, so it's not possible for them to
We're going to talk to this, I mean
Yeah, this is all we know.
This is a design review, it's not, it's not a full lecture, design yet, so a lot of the details you're asking for are down the way.
This could be months and months and months.
So it is possible that, that that connection could be made eventually for
Well, it couldn't go through the conservation land, because that's going to be conserved. Yeah, you can't just
Okay, so you're saying, no, if this is, if this is proven, it won't happen, is what you're saying?
Cannot be, that land, the green space cannot be
That was the clarification I wanted. So the other part about this is, you know, we moved here about fifteen years ago, a large family, seventeen seventy-one colonial, we looked for several years for a place, to find a place, a colonial home with a lot of land, had to go as far as Pittsfield, didn't want to go that far, we, we were from Dover. This lovely place, low priority.
We got to give a chance to other people to speak.
Okay, you want me
Thank you very much.
I have a lot of other points here that I, could I touch on?
Well
You're limited to three minutes.
You're limited to three minutes.
And we've given you
There will be, there will be additional
You can have my three minutes too.
There'll be additional meetings on this.
Yeah, some people think this is a done deal or something, this could be
Well, I understand when I came in, I was told to bring, I was told to bring all my concerns.
We have another project. Twenty-two units. We're twenty-one months into this project.
You'll have another fight at the office.
So you got
Plenty of time.
Probably a couple of Christmases involved in this, who knows?
You could submit a mistake.
It all depends on how this works.
I have submitted it.
Exactly what you're going to talk about.
Yeah. Yeah, we each have a copy. I thought you submitted, appreciate it. If you submit, appreciate. Anybody else? Add, like, add anything?
Add those to the minutes here. What you sent will add to the minutes, so it reflects on the record.
Yep.
All right, here's David Divins. I live at one thirty-six Oak Hill Road. It's the, um, the one, the corner lot by the, where the road there. Yeah, that one right there. I just wanna reiterate what Tim was talking about, the, the, the new access road. In, in the, um, a full yield version of this, uh, plan, where the current road is placed, which is right along the, my property line there. It, it goes right into the ledge, into Witch's Rock, whatever it's called. It, you, there's no way you're gonna put a road there without blasting through that, and I'm concerned about my property and the, the effect of the terrain along there. So my concern there is that care is really taken about where that road is placed and what would happen, um, along that line. You know, where, where the current driveway is, it's no problem. It's far enough down the hill. But where that was currently put on the, uh, on the plan, I don't see how you're really gonna be able to do that without some serious engineering, um, along that property line. So just wanna bring that out, that don't underestimate the, the difference in elevation from, from just that one corner down to where that current.
I drove the road and I see where your driveway is, all the way down, heading north. That slope is, is quite a lot.
Exactly.
Stormwater manageable will be a huge thing too.
Yeah, exactly.
Can't leave, I can't go.
Yeah, and that water management, just, you know, it's not just on my, my driveway. It's all the way down that whole hill, down towards the, the, the open lots on the other side of the road as well.
I parked down by one sixty-three and did a measurement and, um.
Thank you.
Quite a bit, so we understand that.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, we do have to provide a yield plan that looks the best, but we have no preference in designing that road where it's located on the yield plan. We would like to use the open space design.
Okay.
Just a quick, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. I know that. Why did you put the road there where you put it someplace different with the other one?
Lot configuration and area battle.
Okay.
Just get the numbers.
Well, so you wanna get the lots?
And they're rectangular.
Any other, anybody else?
Yep.
Hi, Todd Dudley, one sixty-eight Oak Hill Road. I'm, uh, in here. And my only question is, this is, uh, in this plan right here, this is, uh, called open space, gonna be, you know, kept as open space and current use or whatever. And I heard the subject brought up earlier is, if that's, if that's what it's meant, is it meant for these people to access this? And does it always stay that way, no matter what happens here or here in terms of development? Does this remain tied to this cluster development?
Right.
Always will be open space?
Right. It will be.
Sorry, I'm not near the mic.
It becomes deeded as open space.
So it remains that way?
Yes. Right.
That's my only question.
And regulations suggested, to the extent possible, resident and public access be given to the back.
Right. So when I look at this plan, I'm thinking about these people that wanna try to get out there, and they're gonna walk through somebody's property or, you know, on a line between properties. And we experienced that on Oak Hill Road where there, there was a backland set aside for open space and was gonna be accessed by all the people on Oak Hill Road, but the path went down the center line between two properties. Property owners didn't like the fact that people were gonna use that as a path, so they made it uncomfortable and ended up, nobody used it, and it's a wasteland. So I'm just curious about how that happens in here. But to hear that that remains there is my main concern.
As the process evolves, they may, some of the, the other subdivisions, they've put twenty of, twenty-foot wide walkways between properties.
And it's, yeah, and we typically do that with an easement.
Yeah.
That way there's a legality form in case somebody tries to put a shed or something there.
It's relevant to point out.
Because it becomes vague and people get very protective of.
Yeah, but it's.
What appears to be you walking through my backyard.
It's relevant to point out that, that the regulations require that green space around all lots, so everybody can walk out of their own lot and access. It might be a longer trip, but you have access from every lot with that design.
Right. Well, that's true. As long as people.
Go that way.
Are amiable to that sort of traffic.
No, that's my, my point, is from every homeowner, from their own lot, they can walk to that conservation area, circle around, get to the bigger piece. So they have access from their own property, not like one designated strip, but that is common on some divi.
What you're suggesting is this guy can go like this.
Absolutely.
Correct. Right. So that's great. Depending on the terrain of that, might not be amiable to trudging through thickets of honeysuckle and. All the other kinds of invasive plants.
And the houses on, um, the houses on Oak Hill, of course, adjacent to that, like Divins, Adams, Castro and Eaton, could meander onto the buffer. I mean, that's gonna pretty well open, right? Yep, so.
Now quit using his three minutes.
All right, clock is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Sean Burke. I'm at two fifty-four Oak Hill Road. Um, when I moved to Barrington.
Fifty-four.
When, when I moved to Barrington, I was looking for, retiring from the military. I was looking for a place to raise my family. I came here for the country aspect, the field, the woods, the trees, everything else. In the recent five years, everything's being demolished around me. Okay, my question is for the planning board, is what's going on with that field? This was supposed to be the country, country setting, close to the actual cities.
We, I think we run into this a lot. I think New Hampshire believes in the right of people to own their own property and do what they want with the property. And the towns using the state regulations try to formulate things to make it best. But ultimately, people own property. I mean, if you wanted to put a garage on your property, neighbors shouldn't be able to say, I don't think you should have it, you know, things like that.
Well, I understand that, Mr. Driscoll, but the only thing is, is then you have setback limits, everything else that's going on.
When I showed up here in nineteen seventy-five, there were two thousand five hundred people here.
Yeah.
Now there's nine thousand five hundred people.
Which we're getting close to be, more of a city population.
Seven thousand people to go back home. I mean, you can't do that.
Well, I understand that. But if you continue to overbuild and overpopulate, you're taking away the wildlife aspect of actual Barrington.
I have them right behind my house.
I used to be able to hunt my backyard. Now I'm looking at possibly not even being able to hunt my backyard because of limitations of distances. So that's my biggest concern.
Barrington's a popular place, very popular.
Okay, the other side of that, you're putting in thirteen additional houses on Oak Hill Road. You're putting additional development even further back on, off of Oak Hill Road, but it's in the back, back there by, behind the Christmas stuff. Dove Development Group has that small open area for all the other houses that are built on Oak Hill Road. Those should be open area. It should still be considered a part of those lots, correct? So those should not be built on ever.
Zoning is different there. It's planned unit development, so we don't, I'm not sure what's gonna be happening there.
You see my point. Everything's being encroached, wrapping around all of us. So what we bought our houses for is now becoming a monopolized building echo. You know what I'm saying?
The same thing would be said about you when you bought yours, I would imagine.
It was subdivided into four lots based off of what Barrington's rules were.
But I think what he's saying is, everybody's, everybody comes in and wants to shut the door behind them.
Right. So the way, the way to do that, and, um, it is something that has been petitioned and shut down and things like that, but is to make a recommendation to change the density requirements for the lots.
Well, I mean, that's what, I mean, when I originally moved here in two thousand nine, it was required. Everybody had to have two, two acres or plus. But now with the open.
Conservation.
Open conservation subdivisions, they can get away with it by not having the two acres and having open land.
So I'd like to clarify that, because that always goes as a misnomer. So they did their yield plan based on the same two acres that you have. They can't get extra density or more houses based on that, so it's the two acre. And then to address your concern about greenery and wildlife and hunting and all that, you've got forty acres in conservation that'll never be built on. So that's the trade-off. You have tinier perceived lots. But each one of those homeowners on a quarter-acre lot pays the same taxes as a two-acre lot to pay for that open space for other people to enjoy.
My other question, and the last question. What is the financial dynamic of the actual houses going to be? Are they going to be nine hundred thousand dollar houses? Because if they're gonna be that way, then our taxes are all gonna be affected as well. Because the increase in property value on the street will actually make everybody else's property values go up as well. So we need to know something, because what I'm seeing here right now is, it seems to me, I bought a house for two hundred forty-three thousand dollars in two thousand nine. My taxes are over ten thousand dollars now. My house is worth five hundred and eighty thousand dollars now. But I didn't do anything. I haven't had anything except for a garage.
State law, nothing we can do about it. Have to set the value at ninety to a hundred and ten percent of what that house would sell for today. State law.
And this doesn't address your concerns about, because the opposite, but the, the state is pushing the other way. I mean, you know, when they talk about affordable housing, eliminate barriers to construction, you know, you hear a lot of the governor, governors talking about that now. That's gonna make zoning, this stuff you're talking about, much more difficult to do. Because state regulations over town regulations. So that kinda stuff, the way they're talking about affordable housing and they're talking about eliminating, eliminating barriers to building, that is gonna, that's, that's exactly what, the opposite of what you're looking for, so.
Well, my.
Yeah, we, we support affordable housing too. Affordable housing sets people a property rights and they can build, to the maximum extent they can build. So, you know, I think that, that, the, the regulations that are in place reflect the views of the town and are voted on by the town. Once they're in place, if somebody complies with, if somebody complies, there's really nothing we can do on a project-by-project basis.
As you've seen us with the, probably the two prior application, our job is to hold people accountable to the regulations as they're written. We, and that's the extent of what our job is. We are, um, kinda chaired with, within this role.
I understand.
And we do listen. I mean, the last voting town meeting, there was twenty-seven war articles or something like that. Most of those came out of the planning board, addressing concerns that we heard from the residents. So why we don't seem to listen on individual projects, we do listen, but the, that listening means we try to change the regulations for the future.
Well, I mean, I just, I just noticed that one of the houses that were built on Scruton Pond, they wiped out every tree on the actual property. And I'm like, but this is supposed to be like a conservation area. So the wildlife, as far as things go, the wildlife's still going to be here. Problem is, if you don't have the ability to actually keep down the population, because you don't have the limits to be able to hunt it, then you're gonna have disease and problems out in the natural habitats.
Right.
So that's all I, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? This is hearing none. I'll close public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just relate to the waiver, the, uh, value question as it comes up on every single project.
Yep.
I think as, as you understand it, it's market-driven. I know it's a standard answer, but that's, that's what it comes down to. It's whatever the market allows for.
Hey. I, I don't have another comment. Can I submit this also?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else has any, uh, anything you wanna say, send to the land use department and they'll make it part of the record. Everything's online, um, all of the plans and everything. Just go on the, on website. Okay, um, so does this satisfy your need for clarity on the yield plan, so you can come back with engineer things?
No.
Question answered.
I guess we need a gut feeling of which plan. And is the open space subdivision worth the waiver to the yield plan? Because without it, we can't go forward.
I think you're asking the board to commit to something that we can.
No, it's not binding and we totally understand that.
It's a design review though, so he's entitled to ask those kind of questions. Without a, understanding, it's not a commitment on our part.
Yeah, nothing said either party is, at this stage of a design is. Binding on.
Totally understand that.
Yeah, I would be minimal to going with the conservation subdivision, providing thirty-seven acres of conservation land.
Removing lot twelve.
And going with that, I would grant, I would tend to support the waiver on the yield plan. Now, the yield plan will have more detail. We don't know the topography or anything.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, if you were to go that, you need a wetlands crossing from DES. You need nine point six from the town, because the road goes over wetlands buffer. So we're understanding all that.
Yep.
And the, and if you look at the change of the regulations, uh, we, to use your regulation that came in on yield plans, you have to show that it's actually feasible, uh, and realistic, right? Those are the terms they use, so.
Economical, I think is what I said.
Yeah, we get, yeah, right. And technically, we had one that would have required a thousand-foot bridge practically across buffer wetland, wetlands. So I, I guess we would view that as probably not too.
No, no, I've done enough of these. As you can see on the yield plan, we have one, which would be a minor wetland crossing, which at the greatest extent would be a large color, that's it.
And as far as this, you do, uh, robust storm, uh, stormwater management too.
Oh, absolutely. That's required.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so we'll be seeing all that from the folks in the audience. So no, nothing can run off, added runoff, the problem.
Now, you addressed removing lot twelve in the yield plan side. Looking at lot twelve in the conservation subdivision side, it starts getting into the, the funny angle piece again here that we're talking about. So I just wanna make sure we, like, catch that on the front end by, i- if you have the ability to square that up, that may also create the access, create an access to the, to the conservation land farther behind it.
Yeah, I can look at that. Um, you know, normally, the shape is a little less of an issue or a strength in the open space subdivisions.
Yeah.
Conservation subdivisions. You usually have that allowance to make the smaller lots a little bit more irregular, but no, that'd be a good, good location for an access and we'll just square that off a little bit.
Thank you. Any, anything else like to say?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Hearing, I guess. Any further questions?
If they wanna close design review.
I'm gonna do that next, yep. One more question, um. You wanna close design review and you're gonna proceed with their application?
Scott.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna close, you wanna close design review? Just have to make a motion to that. Make a motion to, uh, to close the design review, public hearing, and.
Second roll call.
Yeah, five.
I'd be out of eye.
Test your eye.
Out of eye.
Let's go on.
All right. It's not over yet.
Vernal pool.
Apparently we're not that interested.
Wow. Sean.
Yeah, I saw that.
Would you stay here?
Nope.
Yep. The, the vernal pool actually is just that small piece of the light.
Hey.
I think. I'm sorry.
Let's keep this rolling.
That was a.
Vanessa wants to go to bed.
Done with a separate meeting.
Okay, what time is it?
She's already sleeping. That's why she doesn't ever come.
She's got, she's gonna quit at ten, nine o'clock, so we're good. Thank you, Vanessa, by the way. Next one, we have, uh, item number under five, class six in private road applications. Six A, review of request building permit of Karen Gould. Three-ten Holiday Lake Shore Drive, map two sixty-one, lot fifty-nine for a category three, option one, application. Is there anyone to speak to this? Um, it's probably. Anybody on there? Oh, okay, Nicole is. Brian passed Mr..
Oh, we're looking at, waiting for her, um, possibly. I just wanted to note that I happened to come across her. I was looking at the property. She asked why I was there. I wasn't on the property, I was on the road. And we ended up talking. We didn't talk anything about this, what she, what her applications were. We just talked about her, you know, philosophy of putting all the area in conservation and things like that. So just for full disclosure.
Okay, thank you.
General comment on this. I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to it. Looking at this, I remember when this was originally approved, this was a, um, approved as an ADU.
Correct. That was, this was an ADU to the house across the street. There was several lot line issues and boundary disputes. All has been resolved through lots of work, um, with the surveyor. So this, it was, it was deemed that this, through those lot lines and all the changes, that this was able to be a standalone dwelling on its own parcel. So it's not an ADU to what used, what was, um, I'm, I don't, this is. So it's not an ADU to what used, what was, I don't, this is too confusing for me, but the corner that she owns, the other property, this was an ADU to that, but it's been separated as a separate dwelling on its own lot.
So it, there is a, there's, it's actually been parsed off, there's an actual lot for it?
Correct.
I don't think I've seen that.
Go along with this map.
There it is.
I was gonna see if I pulled it up on.
Time to tell a lot.
Yeah, that's, that was the, all the work that they had to do. There were so many issues with, with boundaries and et cetera that.
And Vanessa may have something to add if she's still with us. I was trying to pull up.
I'm still here. What, what questions did you have?
The, the, the question was because it's labeled as an ADU, it was an ADU for the old house across the street, but now it's on its own lot of record.
Yeah, yeah, this is an old twenty.
If it's still considered an ADU, is that the question?
That's the question. I stated it was not and I didn't know if you had anything to add to that.
Oh, um, not that I'm aware of. I would defer to the building department. Only because I know you guys do ADU applications and that sort of thing, but I don't know what's involved as far as that goes on your end.
So is this lot fifty-nine?
Yeah, I don't think online, if you look at this, it's not up to date.
Right, and I don't have a plan set or anything, a survey or anything that shows it is a separate lot. So it's, which was my concern. It's still technically an ADU based on what I see. And then if you do the addition, it exceeds the size requirement for an ADU. By a lot.
Well, you're saying it's no longer an ADU, right?
Correct.
No longer an ADU.
But we don't have anything, I don't have anything that tells us that differently. I don't have a survey, I don't have a plot plan, I don't have a map, I don't have anything that says it's on its own lot. And if I pull it up, it all shows as lot two sixty-one dash fifty-nine.
Which goes across the street everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, which was a weird map. I stared at this over and over and over again. That's partially why I went out.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm familiar with it. I've been down there as well and seen it. So I, and I remember going to look at it when we, they went through it. So that's why it immediately popped on my radar. I'm trying to bring up something, but my computer's not cooperating.
And the other thing on this application, it wasn't clear to me, what are they proposing? They're proposing bring the road up to standard or ten percent?
If you read the comments, the roads, the road is up to standards, it's.
Yeah, it's category two.
And.
No, it isn't up to standard.
Not a category, no option two.
Do is, are they agreeing to bring the road up to standard or are they putting ten percent down? What are they, what are they proposing? I don't understand that.
It, it's.
Option one.
I think she wants to per research.
I believe that she's just saying that she thinks that it meets the standards.
I agree she did meet these steps. The town, the town road agent said it doesn't.
Why isn't this straightened up before we ever get this stuff? This is the second time.
So, you know, to me, she says it is, the town agent says it isn't. I think we gotta go with the town agent. He's an unbiased, he's unbiased, he's representative of the town. He says it doesn't comply. So to me, for this to, this is gonna, either they gotta bring up the standard up to the property or they gotta do ten percent, so.
Yeah, these comments aren't.
Or, or they can have a surveyor come in and.
So the process is someone gives an application, then department heads comment, and then it comes to you for comment, the select board for comment. So if the road agent makes a comment, I'm not rescinding the application and saying build the road up to standard or do you want to change it? Right? It would be an onerous process and I'd be forever trying to rewrite every application, so.
And the road agent is.
The applicant in my mind at this point has three, three, three steps he can take. He can have a professional come in and say the road does comply because our road agent says no. Or he can propose, he can bring the road up to standard to his property, or he can do the ten percent, but this.
Right, but Ron, so you have to make that recommendation to the select. We have no say.
I was just gonna say, I'll make a motion to make a recommendation to the select board to deny the application because they haven't proven, they haven't answered, there, there was nobody present to answer any of our questions. We have major concerns about the road, the lot, the.
I will second that motion.
And every other item related to it.
Roll call, shepherd eye.
That by.
Test your eye.
All right.
Just a lie.
So your recommendation to the select board is?
To deny.
Deny it because?
We, we have, because it has not answered the question, there was nobody present to answer the questions on the road. We have not confirmed that the lot is separated out with a standalone lot. We don't have a site plan, we don't have.
And looking at the road agent's comments, they seem viable.
So there would be an option for it.
Lot, doesn't it? And then he says, as I stand my first sentence, these are only my observations for no other purpose and the information content.
House number two thirty-one, but which house is two thirty?
Yeah, I couldn't pick it out. Presumably it's before you get to.
That's what I would think.
Yeah.
But so the applicant would then have the right to come back with further information and better.
Yep, they can have a surveyor come in and say the road does comply.
Right, right.
So.
They only do ten percent, they can say I'm going to upgrade the road, it's my property. They, they can, to me, they got three options here. But this one is a, is a no bueno.
They can prove that it's a separate lot and that it's a lot of record. They can do all of that, but we don't have any of that to go on.
Yeah, I mean, the ADU thing is a whole separate thing, but it's just gonna be addressed as well.
So do you want this to go back to the building department or you want it to still move forward to the select board saying that the board does not recommend it?
I mean, no way complies with policy.
We don't recommend it, but it's up to the select.
Right, yes. We just provide, we just provide comment.
I can't speak for the select board, can I? I can only speak for myself.
With denial, it, it, no way complies with policy.
I mean, my recommendation, sitting on the select board, is then we send it back to, to your department and have the applicant.
You're at the wrong meeting to say.
Which hat are you wearing?
Yeah, right.
We could do that too. We could say, let's do additional, we can make a recommendation because we have questions.
Well, we can make the recommendation.
So the question, does it go to the select board now or does it go?
It always goes to the select board unless the applicant's here and wants to go the other direction. If the applicant says, I'll take it back and start over, then that would be an option.
Okay, that answers that, Jamie.
Joyce, you can speak because you're the ex officio. The select board has dubbed you as the authority to speak on behalf of the select board for the planning board's purpose.
Or more so I can take the planning board sentiment and back to the select board, which.
You get a bit of a two-way street on it.
All right, next. Next up, we have six.
I have a question.
Oh, sure. I motioned to. I seconded. Send it back.
If deny, send it to the select.
Motion to. Okay, next one, six B, Berry River Road, map one oh four, lot eighteen, category three, option two, private class six, private road with a waiver. Hi.
So I am Ross Hoben with the Colwell Banker, Hoben Realty. I am representing the owner of the property, lot one oh four, excuse me, map one oh four, lot eighteen, Berry River Road. I have put this lot on the market and we created a contingency contract with the buyer who was sitting beside me. His name is Serge Bolleou. Serge would like to move a cabin to the property from another location. And we had found that we had to do this submission of both to you and to the board of selectmen. I've submitted paperwork to, to James regarding what the intention is, the size of the, of the cabin. And we also have present with us the president of the Longshores Association, Robert Tibbetts, who is behind here. And he wrote a letter, which I believe is in your packet, regarding the scope of the work for them to improve the road. Contracting to an amount of the ten percent, which is fifty, fifty-seven, excuse me, five thousand seven, seven sixty.
You, you said you're gonna move an existing home? Is that the plan? Move an existing home onto the property?
Yes.
Okay, it says place new home on foundation with decks, so.
New to our town.
So it's existing house, it's not new house, it's, it's new to the town.
New to the lot, yes, new to the lot.
So you're saying the work of the foundation, et cetera, the decks is fifty-seven thousand dollars, is that what?
Twelve by thirty-two cabin.
Yeah, but I guess we can't include it in the value because it's existing, so that's not included in the ten percent. So this would just be the, so ten percent would apply to the foundations and the decks, is that what?
No, that was total construction. That's because it's new to the town. It's moved from another place. It's not existing on that lot.
Yeah, it's not a new.
So I'm sorry for the semantic confusion.
Right, the value of the cabin, the septic, the well, like.
The foundation.
Right, you're, you're building out an entire lot, I.
We don't encompass construction costs for building out a lot. If there's ledge to blast, you don't add that into the factor. It's construction of the home, right?
Right, I would just figured like you can't have a home without a well and a septic, otherwise you have a shed.
Yeah, but we've never, we've never calculated that into cost. It's, it's home construction.
Fair.
Fifty-seven seems low, but anyway.
And that can be changed, but that's how it's been applied.
I think we're being sent back a little bit, but that's happened before.
So the road, the road meets town standards?
No, they're, they're proposing ten percent, right?
Yeah.
Fifty-seven is ten percent.
Eight five twenty-four, the applicant provided a waiver for the septic and certified plot plan.
Yes, I advised on that because it's a, it's a sale and contingent upon the sale, they wouldn't want to spend the money for a septic. They will need that to get a building permit, so it's not.
So that's all set.
It would come at a later date if this is approved.
Okay. It's gonna be, it just takes back.
Okay, your motion to send a, I'll make a motion to forward it to the select board for approval.
I'll second it.
Recommending approval.
Okay, roll call.
Shepherd eye.
That by.
Happy yellow eye.
Test your eye.
All right.
All set. You guys. Item six C, area subdivision. And then there was one. Category three, class six, category three, option one. Hi, how you doing again?
Yep, Jacob Ellis with J E Development LLC. I did the option to bring the private road to the selectman's sixteen, two and two with four inches of gravel. Starting from the public entrance down here, all the way down to the last house.
Okay.
Now, why does this need, why are we involved with this? I don't understand this.
Part of the process of this whole lot merger acquisition from a town-owned property was that the stipulation that they would go through the classics and private road policy for those back lots. And when I say back lots, don't get confused with backlash from this, behind the other lots.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is purely coming before us at this point now to go to the select board for approval as a class six.
Yeah, you're doing a bundle of multiple lots and lot seventy-five was missing, if anybody caught that. But it's a five, it's five lots that were, went through the whole select board merger process for a town acquisition and re-subdivision on the lower piece. I won't get into the weeds because it's confusing.
I guess my question, Jamie, is, you know, normally, this gets triggered by.
I want to shut you down if I could. This was your requirement from the planning board, that you come back for the classics and private road policy instead of you approving these at the planning board. So that was your requirement, that's the only reason why.
Yeah, usually we do that when there's a, a building, the building permit being issued.
So there's, these are the building permit, there's a waiver, because I'm, I'm doing all five lots at once, so I don't have to do five individual. I don't have to come here five times. So I'm doing this as one, one.
If you build the standard, you're good to go in it.
Sorry, communicate that for me.
Doing five in one instead of coming here five times.
Make a motion to send the recommendation to the select board to approve this.
Second. Roll call.
Shepherd eye.
Andy. Test your eye.
All right.
Just a lie.
Thank you so much.
Can I bring up one thing?
Sure.
Select board, road standard is sixteen.
Sixteen feet two.
Twenty feet.
Revisiting Karen Gould. He says it's twenty feet until it reaches two thirty-one and then it's sixteen feet from there down.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have two foot shoulders, two and two. Doesn't, does it say that?
I don't know.
Right. Right, but did he say it didn't meet the policy or just noted that it reduced to sixteen, which is the travelway requirement? I just want to make sure we're not kicking this one down the road if we missed some language.
Final sixteen, two and two, so even if sixteen, it doesn't have the two and two.
He didn't say sixteen, two and two.
Did he say it didn't meet the policy?
He said it made the policy to, to two thirty-one and then it does not.
Beyond that with the development.
Twenty feet to two thirty. I just want to reread it if we could.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, send that one down the road if we don't need to, because.
Can I just ask a quick question on the last application so I don't forget, for Jacob Ellis?
Yep.
So you said that it was also lot seventy-five, that was not in the application. Did he resubmit? I did get an email from him that he did not put that original application. Did he resubmit an application adding that lot to it?
Let me look at the list here of properties.
Because the one, the one I had before I left didn't have it, and then he emailed later, like last week or so, that he knows that seventy-five was not in the application.
Seventy-five is right here.
Okay, cool. As long as it's on there, and it just wasn't maybe on the agenda or whatever. Thank you. Sorry to mean a.
Okay.
I just want to make, get that out of the way before you guys went to the other one. Thank you.
Vanessa, before we leave, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to make or?
He sent the letter to.
Um, I don't have any comments. I'll, I'll be online until nine.
Okay. All right.
Um, I do, well, I do have one thing for the board, since we didn't have, I didn't put staff comments because I wasn't sure about my attendance. Buddy Hackett has officially resigned as a planning board member. And I just want to share that with the group due to his, due to illness, I'll just put it that way. So we are looking for a full-time member and if, I thought I'd put a plug out there, Scott, if you are, if you're, just, if you're interested in being a full-time member, mull it over, but you will have to fill out a new application and go back through the select board process to do that. But you can still be an alternate until that happens.
We'll rush it through for you.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just want to let you know.
Is the application online somewhere?
Um, if you want, I can email it to you. It is online. It's like a volunteer application. It's one pager. So, um, if you want, I can email it to you or, or no, I think, look, Barbara's getting it for you. I can see it.
Don't trouble yourself.
You're all set.
Oh, she's all set. She's got it right.
Strong arm in you, I guess.
There we go.
Thank you, Scott.
So with the board entertaining revisiting this and where it does say sixteen feet, fifty foot past the subject parcel, with the board entertain, be advising their recommendations to add two foot shoulders or trimming the tree as opposed to a straight-up denial with no reference.
It still doesn't answer the other questions related to it.
We don't understand.
I guess what created that question?
But she's got to decide whether she wants to bring up the spec or do ten percent. You know, she's got, it's not us to decide what for her she should do.
Right, but your recommendation to deny based on, to deny, because it doesn't meet the standards, I, I think that the wording here is if it's, it's sixteen feet, if he failed to add shoulders that might be there, might not, to recommend adding shoulders.
I'd only recommend, because she might, she might choose the ten percent. She might choose to get a surveyor out and prove it doesn't meet town specs. She has other options that we can't make the decision for her, you know what I mean? It's her choice what to do. We're saying no. She has three options. It's her, it's her right to pick any one of the options she wants.
I think.
And I don't think I want, we can't speak for her. She's got to decide.
No, you're making a recommendation what you think, just like Mark makes a recommendation.
Deny it because it doesn't comply.
But that's, the rule is to make a recommendation to the select board. Your recommendation is to deny. I was asking if you wanted to revisit that recommendation based on reading the text.
I guess wordage, I mean, I guess I'd entertain making a recommendation to the select board that there's room for work to be done.
Well, she has to resubmit though. She has to resubmit. She has to resubmit. This application.
No, the select board can say, we recommend you add two feet. If the select board is just.
But she, that may, that may be more expensive for her than 10%, you know what I mean? We can't, we can't make a decision for her, which is the cheapest way to go.
Right.
10% may be cheaper than going to 2 feet.
But the select board can have that conversation with her.
Right, she could go before the select board and say, based on the recommendation from the board.
Hang on a second, hang on a second. It really doesn't matter what we do, so like.
Oh, it does. Your influence to the select board has great impact. The select board typically doesn't read into them too much, they take the recommendations and make a decision, is what I've seen online. Now, if those recommendations are trying.
Well, that's a choice. She can resubmit, or she can go forward with that and get denied. It's her choice.
Since you didn't show up, I think that's a good option, Barbara. Go back to the building.
And I think there was just a lot of confusion about lot lines.
Well, we already voted, you want to re-vote?
In order to understand the application.
Kick it back to her, I mean, we voted to put it.
Read it forward. I will amend my motion and recommend that we kick it back to the building department to be, to create, to get clarity of the items raised in our concern during the process of review.
I will second that. You okay with that, Jim?
Yeah, you okay? Because earlier I understood you to say the process had to be to go to select board and then get kicked back.
Sure, I believe that to be the appropriate process. I think either, I'm okay with either one, however, you know, you see fit. I just wanted to.
We should. We should kick others back.
Maybe it's fine to kick it back.
And I think I've been kicked back.
I mean, I think, I think, you have a conversation with her, do you want to go forward not with what you have, or you want to, you want to resubmit?
Right.
That's a good conversation you have. Her choice.
Yeah, she's going to have to resubmit.
Yeah, either way.
But she didn't show up, so she can't.
Well, yeah, but.
I mean, that.
Defender, not it's, we grew you based on what we have, we made a recommendation based on what we have.
She doesn't have to come, but this question's just got, somebody's got to answer them. You know, if this was clean, she didn't have to be here. But it's not clean, there's questions, and she didn't, the asked questions, that's the problem. If this absolutely complied with the policy, in fact, she was not here, wouldn't be a problem for me.
Wouldn't matter.
But she, unfortunately, there are a bunch of questions, and we don't have clarity, and. Yeah, I think so.
I do, too.
So Jim, you've seen a plot plan that shows that that is separated? Because tax records don't.
Yeah, the tax record was the best map we found, I thought. Is that right?
Oh, that's the one that Joel was doing.
It's like huge, yeah.
They used as their map.
I mean, this, this is all one lot, it's an ADU, can't add on to it anyway.
Yeah, but where do you get that information from? I mean, you're pulling information that you don't have.
That was what she was permitted as. No, you can go back, if you pull it up, it was permitted as an ADU.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, originally.
But we didn't, we didn't have the next level of information.
What deems that it has changed?
Two living areas on a house, on a lot, one's got to be in an ADU that's permitted. Another, another house on the same lot is not permitted, so.
Yeah.
These questions is exactly right, you can't expand, you can't be above 1,000 feet for an ADU. If it's, if they're expanding it on 1,000 feet, that, that's, that's a killer right there.
100%. I'm not disputing that. I, I was under the impression, and I think, you know, I have to pull out, that, that's been subdivided and re-divided, she's in all the time, and she just put the 100-something acres into, you know, conservation.
Oh, one's an ADU, always an ADU?
No.
If she subdivided it and made it as a lot.
No, we just seen some evidence to show us that.
Yeah.
Tax method records don't.
Yeah.
And nothing she presented.
Yeah.
Information.
Deemed it is a lot, then she can change it, it could become a house lot. Or she could keep the ADU and build a house.
Even I.
All right, so where are we at? Is it, are we going to send it back to the select board, or are we sending it to the, to the.
So it would have to go through.
I think we re-voted to send it back to building.
Yeah.
So Jamie, just talk to her, show some evidence.
Yeah, that's a good plan.
Well, she can, she can choose learn.
She must have two feet, right?
She's got so much going on, you know, it's insane, the property and the lot line disputes, it's worse than Gary, you have to try to wrap your head around, so I'll try to get some better documentation for that.
Thank you. Item number six. Item number six, other business may come before the board. Update from the Master Plan and Zoning Amendment Subcommittee. Any comments for anybody on that committee?
You're on, please.
I know, you, me, Joyce.
Well, I mean, Scott's.
Scott, any comments? We'll just say no comments at this time. We're going to meet tomorrow, right, at 10 a.m., so.
Yeah, no comments right now.
Yeah, we've met just once?
Yeah, we met just once.
And it's all just talking about the vision plan at this point.
I think tomorrow we're going to get into more meetings.
I hope so. Sorry, but. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to let you guys know that at our next meeting on September 3rd, we are going to be talking about zoning articles you guys want to work on, so come with whatever you want to have for discussion points. I'll send John the notes that I have from previous, from the year. And then if anybody else has anything else that we haven't talked about before, let us know, and we'll send out, I guess, I guess since it's that's next week, I'll, I'll try to have it for a packet for Thursday, I guess, it sounds like.
And in preparation for the, you know, discussion of new changes, House Bill 1113 just passed, it says that any property is being sold within 250 feet of a body of water as far as septic inspection.
Okay.
Got to pass.
Who's the burden on?
So.
The buyer.
Remember, I was, I was pushing, I was pushing that if you, you know, expand a property.
So it's not like Title V in Massachusetts, before you sell your house.
Expand a property on the lake, you also have a septic inspection, so I think I might want to readdress that, with, to me, the state bill directly supports that. So I may, I may bring that up again.
Because Massachusetts, every septic system before you sell your house.
Well, given all the cyanobacteria blooms we're having, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I think it's something that, you know, a lot of these properties we convert, you know, they were cottages back in the day, whether they can, whether the septic systems conform with the regulations at that time, I doubt.
They were probably, a lot of them just.
And they certainly don't comply anymore. So if you're putting, you know, you're expanding a property on there, with all the impacts of water quality and the lakes and stuff, I think that having a septic inspection, you know, is, is, it should be part of our regulations.
Sounds good.
Okay, we lost that. Question is, where would that be, though, Joyce?
What do you mean?
I have a question.
Yeah.
We would not, we would not have a requirement big.
What would that be?
It'd be in subdivision, zoning.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, but he keeps.
I don't know.
Wait a minute, I want to say that on the record.
I don't know, that's a.
You know, the class six is a selectman policy, so this might have to be a selectman policy rather than a zoning change, you know what I mean? Because it's.
What policy you're talking about, trying to.
If we had a requirement.
Vanessa, are you able to hear this conversation? Are you still there?
Yes, I can hear you.
So let's say that we had a, we wanted to put something in place where if you're, you know, you're expanding volume or living space within the 250 feet of a body of water, you want to require a septic inspection by a certified guy.
So the state law requires that for immediate issue of building permit for an increased load, you have to have a system that is recognized by DES that's less than 20 years old, a new system plan.
But you don't have to do it, you just need the plan.
Right.
The state now requires an actual inspection done, as part of a sale for a property.
Yes, and if it's found to be a failure, it's got to be replaced, so.
I guess my question is, why wouldn't we have kind of the same thing if you're expanding on site? Why shouldn't your system be inspected, not just, you know, it's less than 20 years old, be inspected, make sure it's not a failure? If not, it has to be replaced, it has to be replaced.
I think it's a good question, ask the lawyer to see if we legally require that.
Well, my other question, too, Jamie, is where would that go? Would that go in, right now?
It could go in the shore and protection area of zoning.
Yeah, it's in zoning.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I got you.
Shoreline overlay.
Yep, 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 got you. Okay, that answered my question.
Hey, item number seven.
Motion to adjourn? Hi, sorry. Ian? Yeah, I had one item, is we talk about zoning, one of the things I wouldn't mind considering is when you look at folks who are looking at coming in with build, yield plans that require wetlands, crossings, or culverts, I was talking with some friends of mine who are developers in the, like, Manchester area and that, in kind of a more urban setting, but they're actually required to permit it in order to cross that, to show that you actually can.
Could get a permit.
Get a permit to be able to get the yield plan.
Kind of are leaving, but I don't know.
Why couldn't we?
Why couldn't we? Yeah.
I mean, like, when you look at some of these crossings, that in itself may also help with some of the density issues.
We've kind of evolved from a conceptual plan, yield plan, which just means you just.
Throw down a plot.
You take, you take the Grand Canyon, you throw a bunch of things over and see it's a yield plan, right?
Well, and that's where.
Without considering slopes or anything.
Is we start looking at some of these that then come before with further build-outs, you look at them and you're like, eh, I don't know if you actually could get a, a house into that when you look at these impact zones and the steep slopes and some of the other stuff that now suddenly starts showing up when you get further in it with the vernal pools and the, the other items.
Far as stretch of the street slopes, right now, our only requirement is you can't put a, you can't put a structure on a 35% slope.
Every, most towns have 25.
You know, and 35 slope is a lot.
Well, most towns have 25 foot.
25%.
25%.
And I'll use a plan that's approved and developed, if you look at what's being built on nine, you look at the cut on the side of that hill, like, talk about a slash and something that ultimately, when we get some, some of these good, heavy, four-inch-an-hour rainstorms, there are going to be some problems tied to some of that.
I mean, I think our slopes, our slope requirement's weak.
I, I, I do think we should look at beefing that up.
Yeah, I think 35% structures only is, is not enough. It should be, I think, 25%.
25%.
And not just structures, I mean, roads and stuff, too. But.
Something to think about, some zoning ideas that I'll, I'll mention later on, but one is, I, I think it, the contradictions between anti-development and town center, I think it would be wise to look at a new zoning district to, to, to create some creative design options in that area. If the town center, I think, is still a desirable thing, and I think there's some limiting factors that, you know, that could be addressed with another zoning district that's kind of carving out pieces or do something different. You know, you're going to make it harder to develop, but really the need is for more density in the town center, and.
I, I don't, I struggle with that one, because they have the ability to do density, but nobody wants to build it in the way that it's.
Well, density, density with mixed development, the problem is mixed development doesn't work.
Right, so the question is, do we have.